Greg, before we start, I'd have that ready after the prayer if you would please. Alright, before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, when life seems like a mountain that's too hard to climb, may we find the strength to take just one more step. When our journey seems just too hard to bear, may we find the courage to face one more day. When we feel lost and don't know which way to turn, may our faith and trust in you lead the way. Amen.
Bray?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Lubert?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schriebner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum tonight. Welcome to our August 20th meeting here at City Hall. A touch of bad news here at the beginning of our meeting. Kevin Meinhardt served our city's Historic Preservation Commission from July 1990 until January of 1997. In March of 1997, he started to serve on the Board of Adjustments and was assigned as Chairman in December of 2004, a position that he held until the time of his passing. The city of Jefferson at this point in time would offer a moment of silence for Kevin's family. Once again, our thoughts and prayers go out to that family. Next, we will start our public hearings. Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill 2012-48 is rezoning of half an acre of land addressed as 2715 Portobello Place, the rezoning that was requested. Currently zoning is CO Office Commercial. Zoning requested was RA1 High Density Residential. This property is located southeast of the intersection of Creek Trail Drive and Portobello Place Drive. And in order to approve this, we also need to approve a comprehensive plan amendment so that the zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning at their meeting on July 12th. The map in front of you shows the location of all of these properties that are associated with Tribeca Village. But this particular location is outlined in green, light green color. And it actually has street frontage on Portobello Place Drive. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice? This point in time, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning .50 acres from CO Office Commercial to RA1 High Density Residential for land addressed as 2715 Portobello Place Drive, described as Lot 30 of Creekside Park subdivision, Section 2, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Thank you, Clerk. At this point in time, we'll open up the hearing. Anyone to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, we'll close that. Anyone to speak against this bill? Seeing none. Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schriebner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to B underneath Public Hearings. Janice.
Yes, the next item is in the same area, Bill 49. This rezones 1.17 acres located in the 1400 block of Creek Trail Drive from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RA1 High Density Residential. Greg, if you could go back to the previous, previous one, the slide that we had for the first public hearing, there you go. Thank you. This is in the same area. I'm having a little bit of trouble with the mouse, so I can't really point at that property. But it's the hashed area just to the side, just to the left of the green area on Portobello Place. And this particular tract consists of 1.17 acres. It was proposed to be platted in the Tribeca Village Development, which is the subject of the next two bills. This property located on Creek Trail Drive, it's about 200 feet south of Portobello Place Drive, and the zoning requested would go from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RA1 High Density Residential. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their meeting on July 12th and recommended it be approved. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll now open up the hearing. Is there anyone to speak for this bill? We'll close that. Anyone against? We'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 1.17 acres from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to RA1 High Density Residential for property located in the 1400 block of Creek Trail Drive described as part of the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 14 Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Okay, any discussion by the council? Any debate? Rick?
I want to be sure I get this right, as per the requister. They requested that we have a public hearing on it, then they asked it to be put on the informal. And you're, is that what the wishes are, to put it on the informal or vote?
Yes, that was the request, to have the public hearing on this bill and to place it on the informal calendar. It would be my preference to go ahead and vote on this bill either up or down, so that we don't have a public hearing, having had a public hearing and haven't acted on the bill. As you, pardon me, as you can see from the map, the request for this property is to go to one of the adjacent zonings. Currently, the property is zoned C1. The development plan under Tribeca Village would rezone it to RA1 High Density Residential. So either zoning is appropriate. I would just suggest that the council voted up or down, and so that we can resolve the zoning matter and not have that hanging out on the informal calendar.
Rick, as the liaison to our committee, do you want to put it on the informal calendar?
I'd like to go ahead and vote it out.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and vote it out per-
Vote it out, okay. Alright.
Per staff recommendation.
Any other comments or questions on the bill? Seeing none, roll call please.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schriebner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Motion passes. Underneath number seven, you can read the minutes and reports received and filed here at City Hall. And if you want to know more about our boards and commissions, you can go to our website, or you can call Gail Strope, our HR manager. Next, we'll have council committee reports. First will be our admin committee.
Thank you. Administration Committee will meet this Wednesday, August 22nd, at 8:00 a.m. across the hall. Will discuss the CVB contract, amending the noise ordinance, will review the dog barking ordinance. We have a citizen request to speak about the conference center, and we also will discuss a resolution for frequent offender ordinance, and we'll do appointments review. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next we have the Finance Committee. Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report on our August sales tax receipts. The 1% general sales tax was $557,032, about $10,000 less than budgeted. But for the year-to-date total, fiscal year-to-date total, we're at a positive 131,653. The half-cent capital improvement sales tax was down about $4,600. For the year, we're on the positive side, $73,000. We continue to meet, the Budget Committee continues to meet. Our next meeting is Tuesday, the 28th, 5:30 to 7:00 across the hall. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Sean. Moving on to Public Safety, Dr. Brian Pope.
The Public Safety Committee has not met since our last council meeting. The next meeting will be on August the 30th, following Brown Bag.
Alright, thank you, sir. Moving on, Public Works and Planning, Mr. Bob Schriebner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have not met since our last report at the last council meeting. Our next meeting is going to be Thursday, August 23rd, 2012, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. I think we have 13 or 14 items on our agenda. Probably the two or three that might be of most interest to people. We are tweaking an ordinance on abandoned buildings program. The sign code amendment will be discussed. Other than that, it's mostly routine things such as permissive use of right-of-way and so forth. So if folks want to come, we'd definitely invite them to attend the meeting.
Alright, thank you, Bob. Any liaison reports tonight from any other committees? Alright, seeing none. Nothing under nine through 12 consent agenda. This point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No bids under $50,000. Bills introduced. First reading of 2012-53.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with TWS Incorporated to construct the Algoa Treatment Facility Contract A Bio-Solids Removal.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. We took bids on the sludge removal at our Algoa Treatment Facility, and the low bid that was received was from TWS Incorporated for the amount of $224,000. Those funds would come out of our wastewater fund, and those bids were well below our estimates, so we're recommending approval.
Okay. Any other questions on 53? Alright, moving on, we have first reading of 12, excuse me, 2012-54.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract amendment with Peckham &amp; Wright Architects Incorporated for architectural services for the new fire station number three.
Roger.
This was discussed at the Public Safety Meeting, and the slide on the screen shows the first three lines are the original contract that we had for the design of this. Since that time, we have now discussed with the architect the additions of adding some storage, an additional bay, and then of course, the 911 backup center, as well as we are proposing to add a few more dollars for assistance during the construction phase of the project. The total increase for the design services is $51,000, and that brings the total for all of the construction of this proposed new fire station to the $2,650,000 is the actual construction cost. The design total cost would increase to $179,600, and that's still about 6.8% of the total cost for the total project. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Bray.
Roger, how many bays did it have, and why is a bay being added?
The original had three bays, and the, we looked at a fourth bay for the ambulance. The county, though, has decided not to include that, but the fire department still would like to keep that extra bay there available, and it would give them a little more storage as well. Chief may have something he may want to add to that, but-
Chief Rannick?
Basically, the fourth bay would be half depth of the rest of the apparatus bay. We see some equipment we have that could be utilized there and be on first response if the ambulance service doesn't decide to move in there at a later date.
Follow-up, Ralph?
So an ambulance will still fit there if that should be necessary in the future?
I'm still optimistic that a ambulance can be put there.
The bay will fit that piece of equipment, yes.
Physically, it's big enough. Bob?
The hardened area, 900 square feet, is that, I presume there's some room for growth there? I don't know if there's anticipated growth of that service. Maybe Chief Schreader's the one to be asking that. I'm not sure, but I think that's primarily for the police department's use, isn't it?
It is. In fact, totally for our uses. Capsonova happens to be here, but it would be, in my opinion, that growth would be many, many years down the road. We're looking for a redundant 911 center, yet not necessarily as large as the one we have. We don't need five workstations as we have in the basement of the police department. But I think that would be sufficient for many years.
Okay. Nathan?
I was just going to add, in terms of the use, there is actually a very, very, very small portion of it that will be used for the backup of the computer system, too. We'll have our backup servers.
I'm sorry, your voice kind of faded away. For the IT-
Our backup servers for IT. Right now, those are the main ones, well, the backups are in one of our buildings and not very storm-worthy. So this will give you a hardened facility for that as well.
And you had mentioned, I think, at one time that maybe it would also provide room in the event of a storm for safety for personnel?
Yeah, part of the hardening, not the portion that the chief's obviously referring to. We wouldn't be sheltering people in that room, but in other parts, there is hardened space so that the firefighters and, you know, if they have guests that happen to be at the fire station, there will be a safe place for them to go. They would survive the storm. And the idea being that we might lose the equipment, you know, we can't really, we can't afford to harden the bays, but we might lose the equipment. We would still have the personnel, the trained personnel, available and ready instantly to respond, even in a direct-hit situation.
Thank you.
Councilman Weber?
Why, Roger, maybe you can explain why would the fee jump up to 13.4% for that hardened area, architectural fee?
That, the 800, that's based on that 875 square feet. As Nathan was just explaining, the 875 feet is the size of the backup 911 center, but the cost for hardening includes the backup 911 center as well as the other area in the building that's being hardened for the firefighters to have a safe place to go. So it's not, it's somewhat not comparing in the size of the square footage because part of the hardened area actually is in that 12,180 square feet that's in the original fire station there above it. It's just all the cost of the hardening was listed on one line, so.
So you're trying to say that the hardening cost is not all associated with the 875 as far as the square footage?
That is correct.
So if you had that square footage total, roughly what would it be for that $26,000? Oh, the total square footage, is that your question, Bob?
Well, overall, we're still at that 6.8% for the whole building together.
Okay. Rick, did you have a question? I'm sorry. Oh, two Ricks in a row. Going to watch that as time goes on. Any other comments or questions for staff? Okay, moving on to 2012-55. First reading, please.
An ordinance changing, amending, and modifying the zoning code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by modifying specific use standards for outdoor storage and display.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular bill was born out of some frustration in trying to enforce the provisions relating to storage in the, in the front yard. Currently, in the zoning code, Section 35-41B, is our specific use standards, and there is a provision for outdoor storage and display. And it specifically says in the front yard restrictions, that no portion of any front yard, including driveway, shall be used for the permanent storage of motor vehicles, boats, trailers, RVs, commercial vehicles, or parts of any of the foregoing. Permanent storage, as used in this section, means a presence for a period of 72 or more consecutive hours in the front yard. That's how the current code reads. What was happening in some situations, property owners would move their RV or their boat or their motor vehicle for a time, a few hours a day, a few days, and then it would come back to the driveway. We have one property in which we have a six-year history of some issues occurring, and the proposed amendment would add the phrase to, within a 30-day period to that section. So that would be the modification that we're proposing to that particular zoning section, to get our, give our code enforcement officers an additional tool to help in the enforcement of that provision. This matter went to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last meeting, and a public hearing is scheduled for September 4th. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice?
And I'd just like to point out the drawing that you see on the screen. You can see where the front yard is outlined in the, in the light green, and if you pay particular attention to the center dwelling, you can see that it has an offset. So this is kind of an important component in the regulation of this particular section, is that when there's an offset that does move that front yard out a bit, so that some storage could occur, like in this particular case, where the garage is extended, you could have some storage behind the garage, that extension where the garage is. But it would need to be fully, fully contained within that, that dark green area, so no projections beyond the garage.
Okay. Any other questions for Janice on 55? Rick?
There was some concern about, some people have their RVs parked in front that are just, you know, coming and going on their way from one place to another. Is there going to be a chance to, if, and I haven't heard back from them yet, but if we needed to tweak the hours, or is that, so that they just don't need to be worried about if it's not going to be a, you know, often enough complaint?
I realize that RVing is a very popular pastime, and boating is as well, and so people do bring their RVs and boats home to clean or sometimes service or get ready to go out on the next outing. And so, you know, also, that period of 72 hours has been in our code for quite some time, but that doesn't make it the magic number. If there's another number that makes this a more workable number so that people don't feel like they're, that they're being rushed to get their, get their, their boat or their RV ready to go out on the road or whatever. We don't want to be punitive in the enforcement of it, but on the other hand, we do have these situations that beg for some attention, and we do intend to give the, give those situations our attention.
Mr. Schriebner.
Janice, code enforcement's obviously not easy, or everyone would do it, right? But how in the world can we enforce an ordinance that says 72 consecutive hours or 72 or more hours if we don't know when they parked and whether or not they might have left while we weren't there? I mean, it's, how, how can we establish that? It's not that I'm opposed to this. I just don't know how you can, can, how can you know unless you put a, put a camera on it?
Yeah. Well, you know, in some situations, it's just like the parking authority. They have ways to mark and monitor those situations, and we would do the same in, in this regard.
Okay. I'm a firm believer that you don't have laws that you can't enforce.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So.
Okay, any other comments on 55? Moving on, 2012-56, first reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a budget adjustment to the 2011-2012 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by recognizing the receipt of funds from MoDOT and transferring the funds within the transit budget for vehicle repairs.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did receive a grant from MoDOT. It's actually reimbursement for repairs that we made to one of our buses in the amount of $4,328. That money's been received, and we would like to get approval of a budget adjustment here so that those funds could be used for other repairs on other buses.
Okay. Did you need that tonight, per se, or-
No, but we will need it before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions for Roger on that, on 2012-56? Okay, moving on to bills pending. We'll have third reading of 2012-45.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2012.
Nathan?
This is our annual property tax levy, and this is a year that we cannot raise it. We could lower it. We have recommended that we keep it the same, and I think that's the number that we plugged into the income projections that the council approved.
Okay. Any council comments on 2012-45? Any discussion on 2012-45? Seeing none, if you're ready to vote, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schriebner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes. Third reading of 2012-46, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to membership of the Board of Electrical Examiners and Review.
Gail?
Thank you. This ordinance increases the membership of the Electrical Examiners and Review Board from five members to eight members. We've recently had an increase in interest in members of the community wanting to serve on the board, and we're also starting to see an increase in applications for electrical licenses due to the construction over at St. Mary. So having more members on the board will be able to help the board expedite the process of approving and reviewing licenses.
Okay. Any questions on 2012-46? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schriebner?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of 2012-47.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Nathan?
This is also kind of an annual thing. Periodically, we have to declare some of our property to be surplus, and the council authorized that it be disposed of. This actually does not necessarily specify how it will be disposed of. That'll be an issue that we'll be coming to the council, too, as we get to the time we're ready to do an auction, and I think we're looking at recycling some. But this basically is the list that you should have already seen, showing what we're, what we're getting rid of, what we've decided we don't need anymore.
Okay, any questions on- Okay, any questions on our surplus property, number twenty twelve dash forty-seven? Seeing none, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scribner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Motion passes. We've already had discussion tonight and voted on twenty twelve forty-eight, forty-nine. Next, we'll have third reading of fifty and fifty-one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Tribeca Village Subdivision, Section One, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri. Twenty twelve fifty-one, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section nineteen four oh one, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A, Streets and Highways of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to Tribeca Circle located in Tribeca Village Subdivision.
Was that both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Rick Mahalovich is the sponsor. Rick?
At the request of the citizen, I'd like to place this on the informal.
Okay, any problem there from any other council members? Seeing none, it'll be on the informal until next meeting. We don't have to vote at all, right, Drew? Okay. Moving on to twenty twelve dash fifty-two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November one, twenty twelve, to October thirty-one, twenty thirteen, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mr. Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. We're not quite ready to adopt the budget yet, so I'd request this be put on the informal calendar.
Okay. Any other councilmen's have a problem with that? All right, it'll be on the informal calendar until next go-around. Moving on, no resolutions tonight, under nineteen. We have Bonnie Jo Loughlin, who is not here with us tonight. Next on the agenda is Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. Wanted to discuss a persistent code violation in fourth ward. Like Janice said, it's been going on for several years, probably six or so, and we're finally coming to some conclusions that we can make some minor changes in our ordinances to allow for some better enforcement. The one that is on tonight about the moving the vehicles, the boats and RVs every seventy-two hours within a month, adding that within a month, I think will greatly improve some of these neighborhoods that we're having issues with. And I know over the years, we've had meetings with this, these particular neighbors that are concerned about what's, the violations occurring in their neighborhood, along with city staff, and I think finally, we're getting close enough, having that particular bill, and I know Drew is going to present a bill on Wednesday at the Administration Committee meeting about persistent code violations. So when we have those neighbors, and I know we all have a neighborhood or we all have an issue in a neighborhood in our ward where we may have persistent offenders that just seem to constantly know how to get around the system, how to move their vehicle every seventy-two hours, or exactly what to do to go around our, our laws. Once they do that so many times, I just feel like we need to, to figure a way because our code enforcement officials and our police department are constantly having to respond. So this particular case in our ward, I've asked the citizens to email or text every single time that they notice the violation, and then also to call the city's code enforcement or call the police department, and they've been very diligent about doing that. But the number of calls and emails and texts from them and photographs has just been really high. And I wanted to thank Janice and her department for, for really working hard on this, and I just wanted to say, and that's why I'm bringing it up to the council, it's bigger than what I've been able to solve in, in my four years on the council. It's something that was a first call I received when I got on council, and I'm getting the same calls, about the same issues with the same vehicles and the same boats and the same problems, and the same thing four years later. So I really am asking code enforcement to really step it up and make sure that they are citing each time that they get the call and that they are making sure that those violations are documented so that when it goes forward, we can use the ordinance that Drew's going to help us, help us craft for frequent offenders because we just want to make sure that they are citing and documenting each time so that we can actually solve these problems. So I just am asking code enforcement to really help us in these particular situations where we're finding the persistent offenders, and I just feel like I need the backing of, of the council if there's anything we need to do as we, as these ordinances come up because I, I'm just determined that we're going to figure a way to, to clean up these constant violations. Thank you.
Carrie, I have a question. I know the, the violation or the ordinance that Janice was talking about earlier, will that help this situation in your eyes?
Yes, it will, definitely.
Okay. Are there, are there other ordinances that should be brought up, do you think?
I think the one we're going to speak of as far as frequent code violations, you know, how many frequent offenders, basically, how many times can they continue to be violating the same ordinance? And what kind of action can be taken? I mean, how many times can we write them up for the same thing in a certain period of time without seeing the problem finally get solved?
Okay. Councilman Scribner.
You, if you cite someone, that's one thing, but what is the punishment? What, what is, because in my thinking, that's probably where the deterrent comes in. Are, are we going to enforce this ordinance through the code system? Are we going to enforce it through the, the legal system in the courts? Are we going to enforce it through the citations and so forth as, as most codes are enforced?
Well, in, in the code enforcement world, I know that a lot of value is placed on gaining voluntary compliance, and I subscribe to that notion and philosophy. But I also subscribe to the progressive discipline philosophy, and so at some point, when you've coached and cajoled and counseled and advised for six years, and there have been some summons written over those, that period of time, but I think we're, we really owe it to a neighborhood to step up the enforcement where we can, look at our codes and make modifications where we find some deficiencies, and try to give our code enforcement officials a little better handle on a situation. Give them a little bigger hammer, if you will. And one of the hammers that we can use is, is a summons where they can make an appearance in court. When they go to court, I guess unless there's a specific fine or minimum fine, you know, it would be up to the judge to determine what that penalty would be. And Drew can add to that discussion on the, the bill that he's going to talk about at Wednesday's meeting.
Well, I guess that's the reason for my question, is because if, if there's not going to be some consequence, once you've established that the person has violated the code and, and you are able to, you know, escalate it to the next step, then there has to be some consequence. Otherwise, you know, you, we've kind of have an exercise in futility.
I agree, yes. I agree.
Carrie.
And I think that's why I'm bringing it to the council and bringing it forward, just to say we really would like to see these things written up so that we have more documentation and that we can follow through rather than trying to solve it with the methods that we've been using all this time. And I thank Janice and her team, and I forgot to mention Chief Schrader as well because I know the police department has spent a lot of time out there and trying their best to get that area cleaned up. So I think we have the right tools in place, and now if we get the ordinance tweaked, then maybe we can actually act on it. But I just want to make sure that they're written up every time so that we can actually take that action. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Janice, and I know it's probably not the right time to ask this, but I think we, we have plenty of time tonight, the way it looks. On your drawing that you showed earlier, if someone wanted to put a vehicle in their backyard, could they? For how long?
Yes, they can store their, they can store their vehicle in the backyard.
For how long?
For as long as they want.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Carrie, did you have anything else? Bob, anybody over here? Okay, that's all for nineteen. Council and staff discussion of presentation topics. Any new business during before the council this evening? Carrie?
I just wanted to bring up, I know Melva Fast is, I believe her last week is this week, and I don't see her here tonight. I wish she was here because I'd like to tell her in person, thank you for her years of service. I know she's moving on to a new venture, and personally, I know I've worked with her over the years, and I think she's just kind of done a lot behind the scenes that maybe citizens may not realize, all the work she's done in Old Town and getting grants and getting programs started and all the, the work she's done in the city over the years. So I just wanted to say that she'll be missed, and I appreciate her years of service, and wanted to thank her personally for what she's done with the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Any unfinished business tonight? Scheduled reports? At this point in time, we'll ask for a motion to approve our closed session minutes of August the sixth.
Second.
It's been moved, moved by Bob and seconded by Bob. Discussion? What'd you say, Bob? Is that discussion, Bob? Other brother Bob, okay. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. This point in time, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Sean and, Sean and Bob. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Have a great night. Drive home safe.